All that. Are there any modifications to the agenda? We're all set, team, correct? No more additions? I'm getting thumbs up. So therefore, we'll go right to public comment period. And so I do believe we have a few folks that signed up. And you'll each have three minutes. And Moira has the list.
I have the list.
And is always the greeter and person running our public comment period. So Moira, take it away.
Okay. The first person who signed up is Stephen Lee. And I believe the station for this is right here. Right?
And everyone has a chance to speak. Feel free to come up. Then we will get to board responses if the board wishes to respond. So feel free to speak. And then we'll hear from everyone. And then the board will have a chance to respond or administration. So please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stephen Lee. I have an eighth grader at LICS and a fourth grader at Hickory Heights this year. With the recent spike in the Delta variant, many larger school districts in the country, New York, LA, Chicago, have instituted vaccine mandate for teachers and staff who work in school buildings. And also, the two largest national teachers' union have come out and spoke in favor of such vaccine mandate because vaccines are very helpful to keep COVID transmission inside of school building to the minimal and keep the school community, especially our youngest kids, safe. As I understand it, ICSD currently does not require teachers and staff to be vaccinated. And so my question to the board and the administration is, have you considered requiring teachers and staff to be vaccinated for this fall? And if you have not, why not? And if you have, what are your reasons of not going forward with such vaccine mandate? Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who's signed up is Stephanie Naraki. Sorry, I couldn't hear that. What was that?
Do you, well, we can't quite hear you. But do you wish to speak or not? Oh, you, okay, very good. Thank you. Thanks for letting us know.
The next person who signed up is Katie or Catty Balich.
There you go. Now you can speak.
My name is Katie Balich. I work in the medical communications field. I have two children currently enrolled at BGM with cases of Delta variant rising nationwide and as well as in the community. I don't.
I'm Rosie.
Hi, Liz. I apologize if I speak fast. I'm nervous and I have three things I want to say. And dinner's on the table at our house. At the last board meeting, the last voting meeting, when talking about the plans for the fall, it was mentioned that students who are provided a medical exemption in secondary school will be in touch with their classes through Canvas. I'd like, I'm requesting clarification on what that is going to look like and who is going to be putting the information on Canvas for the students. Because as a teacher, you can't just upload something to Canvas and the students just, it comes into their brain. There's a lot of prep work that goes into that and work that happens after the fact as well. And so just, that was very unclear at the last meeting. As many people have talked about, I'm nervous about the fall and I'm wondering if the expectation is still that I'll have 30 kids in my classroom and have to maintain some distance. I'm hoping you'll address that this evening. The last thing I wanted to bring up, I'm hopeful that you are aware that we are facing an incredible amount of teacher turnover this year. The research is very clear that teacher turnover affects student achievement pretty significantly. We are three weeks out from school with an abhorrent amount of positions open and likely not to be filled. This results in the teachers who are here taking on additional stuff. And yes, we get compensated for it, but there's only so much time in a day. People get overworked, then they leave, and then the cycle just keeps going. And it's been going on for years. And we've been trying to raise the alarm about it going on. But this year, it's extremely significant. And the people who are left ended up, end up with these crazy schedules and moved around and you almost get punished for staying in the place that pays you thousands of dollars less than the neighboring schools. I did look at comparable sized districts and the number of open positions that they have. Nobody reaches our numbers. And especially locally, the offerings are very limited. I specifically want to address teacher retention. I am concerned with the reasons people are giving for leaving this year, especially people who've been in the district for a while. And I'm not sure we're actually trying to retain them. And this cycle is making it worse. And then just as an example, personally, for me, we've been trying to correct my salary for 14 months. I've had the wrong salary for eight years. I've been trying to get it fixed for 14 months. It's still not fixed. And then addition to that, I was short about $150 out of my stipend this year. And that still hasn't been corrected as well. And you know me, I'm persistent. I send biweekly emails. So that might be related to why people don't feel appreciated here. And I apologize. I don't apologize. I said all those things and I meant them. But thank you for your time.
Thanks, Liz. Thanks, everyone. Anyone else wish to speak right now that has not signed up? That's in the room? If I don't hear anyone, then board responses. Anyone wish to go first or have anything to respond to?
I guess I'll go first. I think later in the meeting, we're going to have an update on opening. So a lot of the issues that were raised will be discussed in the presentation from our administrative team. And I think that, that, I think people know this, but I'll repeat it, that things are changing so rapidly that what we thought a month ago, things were going to look like for the fall, has been changing on a daily or even an hourly basis. So all of our people on the team are working tirelessly to keep up with this changing landscape. And as far as, Liz, I have to say that I'm somewhat hard of hearing. And so when somebody speaks in a mask and I can't lip read, I missed most of what you said. I do say that, you know, the notion that we're not trying to retain people is, is something that disturbs me. Because, you know, I've been serving on the HR committee for a long time. And we have Lidera Sims, who is, Velazquez Sims, who is deeply committed to recruitment and retention. So, you know, I just, we have issues with attracting people to this district. We are brainstorming constantly about how to recruit the best people and how to keep them here. So specific suggestions are very, very welcome.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add to that. I, we, we will expect Dr. Brown and the executive team to discuss the issue of vaccination, mandating vaccinations. As you may or may not know, neither Cornell University nor Ithaca College is mandating vaccinations for their faculty and staff. Some of, I mention this because it in fact ties in with an employment problem. We have had greater volatility this year than any other year that I can remember in 10-plus years I've been on the board. This is not at all unique to Ithaca City School District. This is happening all over the state and all over the country. People are leaving the teaching profession in droves. People are leaving other professions in droves. I've talked with teachers who are excellent, wonderful, dedicated teachers who have certainly in the past year, with all we've been through, begun to question whether this is their calling anymore in light of this national trauma. It is, we, it is not that we are not mandating vaccines at this point because we think a lot of people will quit. That is not the reason at all. But it is in fact a factor in a lot of employment decisions. A lot of states are starting to mandate public employees, all public employees being vaccinated. Some of you may be aware that there's a little bit of chaos in Albany right now. A distinctive lack of leadership from our Department of Health, our State Department of Health, which declined to, to release even guidelines for school districts after months of promising that they've had them. The state education commissioner is, has asked that they be released. And the education department is putting out guidelines. This is an unfortunate time for there to be such a vacuum in Albany. We certainly share the concerns of every parent in this district. Protecting the health of children is of utmost importance. And the absence of a vaccine for those 12 and under 12 keeps me up at night. And I, I have a degree in medieval history and I don't have an answer. But as a, as a board, we are trying to support the district in making the best public education and public health decisions for every teacher, staff member, student, family in this, in this district. And if anyone here who is eligible to be vaccinated is not vaccinated, please get vaccinated. Please urge your family and friends and anyone 12 and older to get vaccinated ASAP. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
I want to thank everyone for coming to speak. I, I just, I'm there with you. I have three children in school and I can't believe we're here again. Right? Here we are again. In the spring, we thought we were going to be done. And it's almost more uncertain now than it has been the entire time. And as my fellow board members have said, I know that this will likely be addressed later. I do know that everyone I know here is working so, so hard to figure this out. But yeah, I, it's, oh, God, this is awful. I'm just checking my notes. I'm not looking at my computer. I just, because I took notes while y'all were talking. But I do understand the numbers are up and, I mean, at least we have masks here, I guess. Is kind of how I feel at this point. Liz, I hope, I can't answer your question about Canvas. It was difficult to hear, so you might want to follow up with an email. Because it was very muffled. I can't answer your question about Canvas, so I hope that someone can. And teacher retention, I mean, I agree. If you have ideas, spread the word. We were just discussing some ideas in legislative advocacy about, about getting more teachers. So there you have it. And now I'm rambling, so I'm going to zip it. Thank you.
I mean, I think I would just add onto Erin's that we do have these committee meetings. And maybe Dr. Brown can state which one would be the best that community members come to, to give us some of those ideas. Or if there's someone on the board you're comfortable with, everybody has access to our email addresses. Shoot us an email. Give us ideas that you have. Because this was a big conversation, not even 30 minutes ago, as far as retention and what we can do. And any input that we can have is definitely going to be heard and thrown into the mix because it's our biggest problem right now, obviously outside of COVID and the Delta variant and the masking. And, you know, as far as the masking, it is just the same. I found it interesting, something that Lily was actually saying to us a moment ago, that we're getting, we're getting pushed back from other districts because we're masking. I mean, that's insane. So Ithaca is actually doing above what other districts are currently willing to do. And I think that's going to continue. And I hope we set the standard, honestly. And I think that's what we are trying to do, is set the standard.
Thanks, everybody. You know, I'm in the private sector and, but as that relates to what we can do in the school district. But I do believe Dr. Brown and, and everyone, we have a very, very high rate of vaccinations within our staff, from bus drivers to teachers, support staff, et cetera, throughout the district. I don't have the exact percentage, but it is a very, very high rate. In the private sector, we, they use the language, highly encourage, even where, you know, there is no public piece of it in the private sector, we cannot mandate at this time that everyone get vaccinated. But we certainly highly encourage. And basically, it is at the point now where today, they said, okay, we, you're going to have to, before we attest that we were vaccinated, now we have to provide proof. And to prove to my employer that I am indeed vaccinated. So we're going down this next stage of verification and whatever we can do to mitigate transmission within this district and within this community. This community has done an extremely good job of managing through this pandemic. And we will get through the Delta before the Gamma comes out or the Lambda, whatever may come on down the road. But we'll just have to just keep dealing with it. It is certainly a priority that our children get back into schools. The damage, there is certain damage and drawbacks to children not being in school. I think we all realize that. And damage to the system, damage to, you know, the educational process. The kids, kids figure it out and kids will, kids will get there and be there and do well. But we're going to have to make sure that we're providing all the supports for the classroom as we have. But certainly, Dr. Brown, we're going to talk about all this in just a few minutes. So we'll, we'll have a discussion and more questions from the board at that point. So, but, but obviously, it's front of mind for everyone. And, and, but it is critical that we reopen this district in September and, and move on and move through. And we're going to do that right now. Bye. There's no students here, so no student comments, et cetera. But if we can go right to the consent agenda and we can do that business and then get to business of this meeting, talking about September and what that looks like.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
Let me go, Pat. Move my Moira. You've all had a chance to just look it over, typical stuff. But certainly, another person will report, we are continuing to hire and, and fill positions. So the reason, one big reason we are here tonight is to fill positions. And so, any questions about any of the items?
I just have a question about 4.8 resolution to approve tax law ration exchange program. I just had to Google what that is. Is that, is that a student exchange?
It is indeed. Dan, well, Dan's here. Dan can speak to it a bit. This was a request. There is a, an exchange student waiting to get a visa to come. And, you know, there's a host family. This is right, it's not Rotary, but it is another exchange program. Dan, we, you look, we looked it up, Dan, and it is indeed legit. And go ahead, Dan.
When we have new exchange programs, they have to be board approved. So traditionally, we work with Rotary and other exchange programs. We have relationships with those programs and they've been approved. And this is a new one. So we worked with, we worked with Kate and she said that we need to add it as, on our consent agenda to be approved, to accept students from this program. That's it, really.
So, but again, approved by the State Department and gone through all the approval process on that side. But then we needed to prove so the student could come and experience and enjoy the Ithaca City School District. I do not know which country they're coming from.
Italy. They're coming from Italy.
Italy?
Yes.
Well, there you go. If you have more information.
Yeah. Thank you.
So that was, right, that was the late addition to the consent agenda. But other than that, usual.
And, and I don't, I just want to point out under Article 4.1, that the notes contain some, some very positive news about our financial status and fiscal management this past year that is helpful to the district and taxpayers. And I just wanted to bring that to people's attention.
Thanks, Pam. You got more?
Yep.
Kelly, Erin, all right. Move seconded, all in favor. Am I raising our hands? Because we don't have to do it via Zoom. So thank you. That's, we do have a quorum. We are five tonight. And so, Dr. Brown, I think we're, we're ready for your comments and discussion.
Thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Dainesley. I'm going to invite Ms. Talkid. As I hope to merge my superintendent's update with that first agenda item. Because much of what I've been doing has been connected to our fall reopening. And also, a special thank you to the folks in the board's approval of the consent agenda. There were some donations in there, from IPEI and others. I was to say thank you to the folks in the community and the folks at our wonderful community organizations for your ongoing support. As I've said for 10 years, I'm used to being in this seat and folks coming to ask for money. It's rare that we have folks giving us money. So thank you and I appreciate you.
And Dr. Brown, there are also more tenure approved, well, votes for tenure for another list of teachers in the district that we missed last week, last time.
We plan next week to do something a bit more formal and longer as we recognize everyone with the internal board.
Excellent. That'd be great.
And also, in recognition that I'm going to be keeping my mask on along with the significant speech issues I've had in the past. So if there's a point where you can't understand or hear me, just raise your hand. Because I'm well aware that I can be muffled at times, but I'll try my best. Until the, you know, for the first time in my career, I'm finding myself struggling to keep up with email. And that's not something I like to admit publicly because that's something I pride myself on. I want folks to know, those emails that we're receiving with your concerns and your questions and your wishes, Lily and I, we see them all. I'm just struggling to write responses, very thoughtful responses, knowing that my response may have to change the next day. So as I look to folks, please know, I'm hearing and seeing it all. I hear you. We see you. And we share in your questions and your frustrations and your wonderings about what's going to be happening in our schools. But please know, we are thinking about everything. I heard there were consideration, we've considered, we're considering a lot. And we would, again, welcome your input and your suggestions. But please know, we have thought about a lot of things. And some questions, for example, that have come up around vaccinations and mandated vaccinations. And please know, we've thought about that. Currently, there are no provisions in our collective bargaining agreements that will allow us to mandate vaccinations. We have seen where executives in governor's offices and state organizations have mandated employees get vaccinations. We have not received that kind of a mandate from our executive office at this moment. But that may happen for us. But at this time, please know, that's something irrespective of my personal beliefs around vaccination, it's something me and us in this role, we cannot mandate for all of our employees. And we, you know, we may have some data we can share at some point about how many of our employees are vaccinated from what we've been able to ascertain. But even getting that status is something we can't mandate. Folks share with us their vaccination status. So we've been thinking about that. We've also thought about the remote options. That's something I have spent my morning in Albany. Ms. Talkid and I spent our morning, mid-morning on a call with folks from around our state. Every school leader in our state right now is thinking about a remote option. And that has been different over the last four or five weeks. An article we read this morning, there were, the top 100 districts in the, in the country are quickly shifting in response to the Delta variant. And their quick shift is to provide the kind of remote offering that we're currently providing. So yeah, we have been thinking about the remote option. And yes, we are offering, offering a limited number of spaces for remote learning based on medical needs. That is what we currently plan to do. And if we, and how we expand that is something that we'll be talking about tonight. Please know, we have thought about the remote option. I will say to you, as hard as it is to say, we do not have the capacity to offer a completely virtual opportunity for anyone who chooses to do so. There are staffing issues. I think if I'm correct with the data, the turnover rate for teachers in our industry right now has doubled over the last year. That coupled with a dwindling pipeline creates a situation where, I think I was on, in this setting about eight years ago, saying, I don't anticipate Ithaca, New York ever having issues with teacher shortages. I'm eating those words today. Because in every meeting I'm in, there are school districts who are canceling math courses at their high schools and at their middle schools because they cannot staff them. So this teacher shortage issue is real. And it's something we will be talking about this year, next year, and going forward. Because we need to increase the pipeline and we need to slow down the transitions that folks are making out of our industry. But with that issue, it will, it's become increasing. It's become nearly impossible for us to staff a completely virtual option and an in-person option at the same time. Again, that's hard to say because I want to meet the needs of every one of our young people and family wishes. But at this time, we do not have the capacity to do so at scale. Will we have some limited opportunities? Yes. And we're going to explore that tonight. Ms. Talkid, can you walk through some of the other things? Again, we have some talking points, some things that we've been thinking about, some highlights for our community as of today, at around six, whatever time, what time is it? Trisha, 6:35, 6:45, 6:41? Let's timestamp this thing now. Let's timestamp it. Because I've learned over the last 18 months that you got to make sure you put a timestamp on everything we discuss because things can change very, very quickly. Ms. Talkid.
Thank you. Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Everybody back there? Good. Okay, great. Right, so we've provided the board with a few talking points and we've put draft all over it and made sure that the date is clear. We should have time stamped it as well, right? Because we know that things change very rapidly. Folks, after the last board meeting last week, the special voting meeting, it should be noted that the New York State Education Department has released guidelines or recommendations for New York State schools around health and safety. And each of those follows the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations and guidance. So there were really no surprises. So there were really no surprises for us, which was great because we have implemented each one of those layered approaches, right? They all indicate, it's important to note that even, even as the Delta variant persists throughout our community and throughout many communities in our nation, that they continue to note the vitality of in-person teaching and learning for young people. Um, so from the CDC, there's some really specific quotes that are key, I think, for, for both, you know, our community and for everyone to be reminded of, that the CDC has said, quote, "Students benefit from in-person learning and safely returning to in-person instruction in the fall 2021 is a priority." And then on the 5th of August, they provided an update in, in response to the Delta variant indicating that all individuals, regardless of vaccination status, should remain masked while learning indoors, right? So, and, and we've already implemented that, right? That's, that's continued. Additionally, those layered safety measures, the Swiss cheese that Erin and I were just talking about at Legislative Advocacy around mask wearing, right? Hand and respiratory hygiene, physical distancing, right? Maintaining three feet of distance is key during learning and six feet of distance during eating times, which is actually, um, I would say, uh, something that not everyone in our region is able to implement, um, but we're, we're able to implement. Uh, staying home when sick, there's no longer a recommendation around daily screening, but there is of course, a continued recommendation around staying home when sick. Uh, school-based testing at particular levels of community spread. Additionally, we have this great grant from the, uh, federal government funneled through the state, then through our county where we're, we're going to be able to engage in symptomatic testing, right? So eliminating those barriers for staff and students in terms of traveling to testing sites, right? So I get a stomach ache at school, I quickly sample and I leave, right? That sample then is, um, is coordinated through the, uh, Q, Qgo Medical System, um, to be, to be then transported and, and tested so we can have results very quickly. Um, and of course improved ventilation and filtration systems. So you heard a lot last year about our total overhaul of all of our systems, right? Um, and each of those units and making sure that they were completely up to date. We continue to update, um, the, or I'm sorry, continue to replace the MERV 13 filters, which goes above and beyond the recommendation of MERV 8. So it just has a stronger filtration ability. Um, and so we're continuing to utilize those as well. You know, I think some of the questions around maintaining at this time, right? Maintaining non-in-person options for those with COVID-related medical needs. As Dr. Brown, I think so, so perfectly stated is really around, you know, it's around capacity in a, in a lot of ways, right? Um, you know, from pre-K to, to fifth grade, um, I think it's important for folks to note, we had 13 incredible educators who were specialist reading teachers, special education teachers, English as a new language teachers, who were fabulous and volunteered to step out of their roles in order to serve as classroom teachers. We know that with the return in the fall, our students are going to need special services more than ever, right? And so pulling, pulling those services at this time doesn't, doesn't seem appropriate, right? We also hired eight additional teachers, right? To provide to both staff, distance learning and in-person, um, for that full choice option. Um, and as, uh, Dr. Brown alluded to, we're, are, you know, spoken depth about, is that we're in the midst of this teacher shortage, um, which is, which is a challenge. At our secondary level, um, you know, I think even the wonderful Liz Quadrozzy herself has talked about how hybrid or concurrent teaching and learning is, is, um, not only extremely challenging, um, but it's also creates, um, pretty significant diminished, significantly diminished teaching and learning outcomes, right? So, um, the students who are in-person may get more at one moment and then the students who are distance may get more at one moment, right? And it's really challenging to balance that. And I would say that collectively and together, we have, we've heard from students and we've heard from staff, administrators engaged in deep conversations about this and that is not, that's not an option for us, right? Um, and I think as, as Rob has alluded to before, we also have one of the highest vaccination rates in the state, right? With 77% of those who are 18 plus being, being vaccinated. And the CDC has made it really clear that vaccination, quote, "Vaccination is the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic. Promoting vaccination can help schools safely return to in-person learning as well as extracurricular activities and sports." So that's an overview of where we are today at now 6:48 PM. Um, we're happy to take more questions. I'm also happy to address some of the specific questions that came up during public comment as is Dr. Brown, um, and really just engage in this conversation together. We are, he's right, right? We're working extraordinarily hard. Um, we're collaborating all the time, um, exploring different solutions and really keeping track of the data and, um, and trying to do what's best for our babies, for sure.
Lily, just be, uh, just before we, just before we go on to September, uh, can you just talk to me just for a minute or two about, we doubled our summer programs this year, correct?
Yes.
Right. We doubled our summer programs and they lasted for the usual, how long?
Yeah, it's usually about six weeks or 30 days.
Right. Six weeks. And when did they start?
It started July 6th.
Right. And so we're just really finishing up with summer program, right? And how many children were involved over across all ages?
Across all ages, oh my gosh, I need an exact number. Close to 500? I can get you that exact number.
Well, again, well, just, again, close to 500. So we've had, um, we've had, well, I hate to say an experiment. So we have a, we've had a running experience with 500 children across all ages that frankly just finished up and Delta and other things have been going on while this has been happening. So how, how did that go? Uh, how, you know, were there, were there positive cases? Were there?
No.
How did staff do? And, and how did the kids do? Can real, you know, this is essentially real time, kids learning in school in person, right?
Yes.
Yes. So just a little update and then glad to, um.
Yep. So our protocol is the same for, that it's been throughout the year, that actually we've become pretty, it's become very swift and efficient, um, in terms of when there is a positive case of COVID-19, in terms of contact tracing and immediately notifying a great number of people. And that, uh, that process is outlined on our, on our website and we talk about the, the elements and swift succession that take place. This summer, we didn't have any students, um, or staff, uh, test positive for COVID-19. And, um, although we were ready, every single time we thought there might be something, um, and certainly very quickly investigated, um, even with rumors, frankly, those, those are, those are really helpful. Um, and I would say, you know, I, I visited each of the summer programs, um, and the one at the high school is still going on, which is great until Thursday. Their, their last time, their last time they meet is, is on Thursday. And the, um, the staff and the students were, I would say, quite thrilled and happy. Some of the days were really, really hot. It really helped to have air conditioning, um, especially, um, on some of those super, super hot days. But in general, you know, kids were masked and happy and learning and staff were fabulous and working incredibly hard and also enjoying the time with kids in these really inclusive environments.
The kids wore, well, everyone wore masks inside, but outdoors, they could take them off.
Correct.
And that's currently the, that's still the recommendation now, correct?
Correct.
Well, thanks, Lily. I just thought it, uh, thought it'd be good just to, um, see how the kids are doing. So other, other comments, questions?
I have several questions and I'm just going to lay them out, um, and then be quiet. Um, so when we're talking about not the, the vaccines and not mandating them, I, I get that. I've heard of some schools doing like a voluntary or anonymous sort of query. Uh, and I get privacy, but how do we handle concerned parents of unvaccinated children, you know, under 12 in that sort of thing? That's my first question. Um, not just the concerned parents, but how do we make sure the kids are safe? Like, is there an option for a parent to ask their teacher, you know? That's question one. Um, uh, when we say limited number of spots for remote learning, we know that there's a medical exemption, but can you go on about how limited that is? And then finally, um, you said lunch hour, we're going to maintain six feet apart. And I can't help but think like some of the schools that have a lot of children, that's going to be a late lunch or an early lunch. So, I mean, snacking in a classroom means that they're going to pull their mask off and they won't be six feet apart. So just can you talk about how you're going to handle staggering lunch hours, especially as it gets colder and rainy or whatever and we can't do it outside?
Right. Which is most of the school year here.
Right.
Uh, so your first question about vaccination status and families inquiring about the, the staff that we work with, you know, I was, we have a really close partnership, I would say with our, with our union leadership and one of the union leaders I was talking with today on the phone and, and I asked, I asked them about, hey, you know, where, where are we with this? What are you hearing from your state level organizations in regard to both, um, vaccination mandates, testing mandates, and even asking for vaccination status? And they indicated that right now, those are, those are still off the table, right? And, and that they hadn't heard yet from those state level organizations, right? Um, so, you know, as we talked more, it became clear that it's, it seems like NICE and other organizations are going to really put out some information probably in the coming weeks around those issues, um, and that we wanted to engage once we heard from them, right? Um, because we recognize that this is bigger than us and, and in many, and in many regards, um, has to do with, uh, you know, laws that are not locally determined, right? So, um, we can, we can never stop a family from asking an employee, right? So someone could come up to me and ask me, right? I would be happy sharing. I don't mind, um, but not everybody would be happy sharing, right? Um, and so just obviously folks can be cognizant of that, um, but, but at this time, as a school district, we can't say, you know, Lily Talkit, Deputy Superintendent, vaccinated or unvaccinated, right? Um, we're just not, we're just not at that place. Um, so your other question was about the limited spots for, for those who have COVID-19 related medical needs. So just in case folks are out there listening and, and haven't had a chance to take a look at the website, um, or are unsure about the process, feel free to call anyone in central office, right? You can call the main line for sure. You can call my office, 274-2134, um, if you're not sure how to apply for it. But, um, it's really, uh, it's an, it's a process where you fill out a form, like a, literally a Google form, the family does. And then you need a medical provider to then fill out another form that provides the medical reasons for, um, for the, the need for remote learning. And it's really, again, just following what the CDC outlines in terms of, you know, contraindications to the COVID-19 vaccine or other previous vaccinations, right? And then the list of, um, pre-existing conditions, right? That students may have. So just want to make sure that everybody knows that and families know that as well. Um, so then Erin, your question is, what do we mean in terms of limited? So we have, um, we have classes, uh, we have a K1 class, right? And we heard lots last year about how when we overloaded those distance class, or you know, the folks felt like we overloaded distance classes, they were, the class sizes were too large. So we really want to be cognizant of that class size, right? So we're, we're in talks and, you know, communicating with, with the teachers and getting, you know, revisiting the input that we got from families about what seems reasonable in terms of that. Again, we were just talking about that here, um, but we want to keep it close to the average pre-COVID, the class size that was average pre-COVID. Um, so we have a K1 class, we have a 2, 3 class, and then we have a 4, 5 class. So these are combo grades, right? So we're not talking about a, a wide, huge range, right? We're talking about three different classrooms with special education support, uh, potentially reading support, et cetera, uh, for those, for those folks, those kiddos. And at secondary with, uh, wider access, right? Or wide access to, to vaccinations, again, those, those numbers are likely going to be much, much smaller. And Liz's question about Canvas is a great question. Um, and actually Adam and I were just talking about it today. And so I might just call you tomorrow to talk a little bit more about it, um, because we want to make sure that it's really manageable for both the students and the teachers. Um, and knowing that we may go remote at any time, we want to be really cognizant of what, what makes the most sense for, um, for, again, our young people and for our teachers to make it as seamless as possible. Sometimes we had, you know, literally hours notice or sometimes minutes notice, right? I mean, I remember one time waking up at, um, waking up to a phone call, um, that there was a, a positive case at a school. Um, I think it was, you know, five in the morning. I got a phone call that there was a positive case, uh, that was, and we had to close, close the school before buses went out, right? At an elementary school. Um, and so sometimes we don't have a lot of notice. And so, um, we want to be mindful of what's reasonable for teachers, what's reasonable for kids, knowing that we may make that transition very quickly. But also noting, noting as Liz said, there is prep work that goes into, um, really maintaining a high-quality Canvas class, right? Um, I'm setting up a Canvas class myself right now and it, it is, you know, it's not, it's great, it's a great tool, um, and you need to be thoughtful about it, right? As teachers, we're thoughtful folks, so. Um, your last, was that your last question?
Lunch.
Lunch. Thank you. All right. Great. So, um, Dan and the principals and I, to some extent, um, have been meeting to go over everything spacing and everything desks and everything furniture related to make sure that we can, that we can do this. Um, so in some of our larger schools, like your, your kids go to Northeast, right? And so we figured out, um, you know, a system where students are going to be in the cafeteria six feet apart. And for some of our larger grade levels, one of those classrooms is still going, you know, with 10, maybe 10 kids, for example, will be in, in that space. And so we're thinking about the cohorts now as a grade level as opposed to individual classes now. That allows us to, um, ensure that staffing is, is appropriate, right? And so we're not overburdening teachers who may need to provide supervision in their individual classes, which is what we found a lot last year. That was tough. Um, you know, not, not necessarily a ton, but when it happened, it was hard, right? You need to break. Um, and so 56 kids may fit in that cafeteria, but 10 more kids may, may need to be in a, in a space. So thinking about a lunch bunch and really universally designing it in order to support even kids' social, emotional learning. So there might be an interest-based group that may eat lunch in that room separately, right? Um, so we're utilizing those larger spaces again. Um, and they do look odd, I'll be honest, right? Six feet apart, these kinds of desks are the regular desks, uh, to make sure that students are staying and that, that six feet apart, um, is, is really key there. And then at our secondary schools, um, again, utilizing those, some of those larger spaces and then some of the smaller spaces, um, as, as staffing allows for as well. Does that help?
It does. And just my, I'm sorry, my final question, when you say, see, we're going to cohort by grade levels, but you're still going to maintain six feet when masks are off. It's just that. It's just that that's the group, okay?
Right, so fifth grade now is a cohort, right? Which we can manage staffing-wise, is more sustainable. And it does mean that if they're together for an hour or more, even masked, right? That whole cohort then would transition to virtual learning if there was a positive case, right? Which is what the Tompkins County Health Department just verified for us this morning.
I have a follow-up question on physical distancing that's a little bit more general. I'm just recalling last year when we were setting up for the school year and it was about two-thirds of kids, families who wanted in-person and one-third that wanted to be at home. And you accommodated the staffing for that as much as possible. And then as the year went on and more families wanted their children back in the physical classroom, I recall that one stumbling block to that was the distancing, that there just wasn't capacity to put more kids into those classrooms. And so I understand that the distancing is not as wide now when students are masked, but you know, are we, are we at, you know, are we able to accommodate that? And what's happening with bus transportation as far as distancing?
Yeah. So when we were at, when we were required to maintain six feet of distancing at all times for learning, that made it really challenging for us to ensure that we could, we could fit everyone coupled with the number of folks, especially at secondary, the number of our educators who were teaching remotely as well. So it was both spacing and staffing combined for this, for this extraordinary challenge. So with the three feet of distance, we've actually, we've invested in these desks, which are much more flexible in terms of spacing, right? So they allow both for physical distancing, three feet of physical distancing, but they also allow for a level of collaboration that we didn't see before with those very traditional rectangular desks, right? So that's, that's been, that's been a big shift and that's been a really big help. So thank you to your support and the community's support for helping us get different furniture to make some of those changes. And some of our classes are capped at, you know, at that capacity for that space. You know, so Liz's great question about, am I still going to have 30 kids? Liz, I don't know the actual answer to your question, exactly how many kiddos you'll have in your class, but each of our spaces, based on the square footage, we know how many students can fit based on both the traditional desks and the, these more triangular-shaped desks. So that was the first part of your question. And then the other part is compound questions or trick.
Buses and spacing on buses, that was crazy last year.
Yeah, yeah. So New York State, the New York State Education Department on their, on their section about physical distancing indicated that physical distancing is not required on buses, but masking is.
Okay, thank you. So I actually have a question as a parent.
Great, Kelly.
Because we're addressing everything that's happening now and what the CDC is mandating now, the guidance from our Health Department. As a parent, I know that when we had to switch into, oh my God, everyone's staying home, it was panic. And I'm sure many members of our community are wondering, do we have a plan in place if we are shut down again? And since we are saying hybrid is not an option, what does that look like? And I don't expect you to answer that fully tonight. I just think it's something that are probably multiple people in our community, including our teachers and staff, would like to go into this year having that answer so that they're not kind of scrambling and feel like they're lost. Because as a parent, I know I definitely was.
Right, right, absolutely. No, I think that's, that's a question that is certainly on many people's minds, for sure. So the transition to remote learning is something that, strangely enough, many of us got very good at doing at a moment's notice. Now, you know, in one of my, in, you know, in talking with our Fall 2021 Learning Models Crew, we really focused on the overarching models in general. And we had some conversations too about, all right, that rapid switch, right? Which is part of where the suggestion from teachers came around. All right, let's utilize Canvas at secondary so that when we go, when we go remote, it's not like, where do I go to find all my stuff? And where's my class schedule and what's due when? You know, it used to be on the board, now where is it, right? So, so we wanted to continue to use some of those tools in order to help us with that transition. We've been, we've been outlining even just down to like the minutia around like, all right, let's put out sample schedules again and all of those kinds of things. So we're at that minutia level right now in order to communicate, I think, more effectively with staff and with the, with the community about what it will look like. A great strategy that we learned last year, unfortunately, was communicating in advance if we were a school district that, or we were a school that had not yet gone remote, especially at elementary, that communicating upfront what that was going to look like was really helpful. So for example, Quga Heights was our first elementary school to go remote when we, last year in the fall, right? And so a team of teachers, a couple of days later, ended up facilitating a quick training and doing a simple one-pager on what to do in advance and what to do that day, right? For all staff, for all elementary staff, which was really helpful, that one-pager just to say, okay, here's, you can let families know about what the schedule's going to be. You can pre-plan what the Google Meet is going to be or you can tell them to just check their email. Or if they can't, then we're going to call them, you know, right? So, and we started transporting devices back and forth, which was also really helpful. And so we fortunately, unfortunately, learned a lot of things to help us do this well last year.
I can add, another thing we learned is the importance of language. We don't use that term hybrid. We're either going to be remote or in-person. So whenever we hear hybrid, that's some people are thinking that's simultaneous teaching or back and forth, two days a week. For us, our plan right now, we're, and there may be quarantines or the governor may come on and say, you're completely remote. And we'll deal with that, but otherwise, we're all in.
Moira is writing, so. Moira, you want to?
No, no, I don't. I've, other people have asked my questions.
No exactly outstanding questions from the smaller group of the bigger group. And you good, Moira?
Yeah, I'm good.
Moira is our note-taker, so. We will talk about this next week again because we're probably going to have more board members. We have a quorum tonight. Several board members couldn't be here tonight, they'll be here next week. And things may change, Dr. Brown, between now.
They will change, I'm almost certain.
But we appreciate the efforts, really outstanding job. Talked about this summer, but we talked about outstanding work all last year to try to get to this point. And we can only rely and hope on the outstanding work of this great team, meaning teachers, custodians, staff. And we talk about cleaning. We're in facilities, we're the other day, I asked, you know, so what's the cleaning protocols as we're like going back to a more, well, at that point, a bit more normal school year? And, but nothing will change. We're not going to back off on our cleaning, any and all buildings just because, okay, we're getting, perhaps getting out of a COVID era. You know, it's, we can't as a district at this point say, okay, it's okay to be a little dirtier now. I mean, that's, that's not going to work. So some things are never going to change as we evolve from where we were prior to all this and where we will be going. So we will talk about this again next week. Dr. Brown, do you, do you want to weigh in on anything else before we let Lily?
No, sir. I think just a special thank you from Ms. Talcott and her work over the last 18 months. She works tirelessly and she's up on all of this. She's a statewide leader in this particular issue. And I'm sure that's not something she thought she was signing up for when she signed on to be the instructional leader in a deputy superintendent position. So thank you, Ms. Talcott.
Yeah, Dr. Brown, seemingly every time there was an update on COVID at a certain school, it was always signed by Lily, right? And not.
She's our district designate, designateee, which every district must have a person designated to be point for all things COVID.
And we appreciate it. Thank you, Lily. And thank you, Carrie Burke, who's not here tonight, but obviously leading the charge on helping us understand how best to move forward. And anything else, we'll let everybody run out of here. But we will meet next week and do some more work. And we'll do some facility stuff on Thursday. Amanda, is that work? Yes, I'm seeing yes. So I get to play hooky from work for a little while and do that, which is always fun to do because it's building for the future. Dr. Brown, that's what we do, right?
All the time.
We're building for the future, all right? So thanks, everybody. Glad to entertain any and all questions, et cetera. And we'll do that every day and we'll see everybody soon. Thanks.
Thank you all.
All right.
Nobody had, nobody had anything else?